Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 31st Carlisle Borough Council Workshop. We'll begin this evening with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise as able.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, everyone. I do not believe we have any citizens to be heard. Stephanie, is there anybody in the chat that wishes to be recognized at this point for that? All right. We'll begin again this evening with a presentation. Staff has a budget status update.
Hello, everybody. I'll be doing the presentation tonight for the first quarter. So I'm going to turn my screen here. Apologize for the simplicity of it, and I gave up my career in acting. It was a choice that I had to make. I thought maybe I could do both, but I said no. They're going low in, and they're going to be boring. So here is the report. First quarter 2021. We're going to start off here with the water, stormwater and sewer altogether, since they kind of function in unison. In general, they're meeting expectations. Nothing's really standing out here in the first quarter. Revenues for sewer have seen an increase over last year. That's primarily related to how we bill our townships. They got a big credit last year due to reconciliation. And this year, we got to build up the full amount. So that was about a $200,000 increase for sewer. But water and stormwater revenues are pretty consistent with expectations. In terms of expenses, the sewer has seen some increases due to capital and stormwater. Some decreases. We were just a little more, did a little more early on last year than we did this year. I did want to draw our attention to the aging accounts for the three utility funds. You'll see in this table here, over the last four years, that we've been increasing. Primarily in 2020, we saw a huge increase over 2019, $102,000. And in 2021, we're at about the same level. However, the number of accounts that have increased quite substantially. And you'll see that the ratio of accounts that meet our leenable threshold have more than doubled. So the important thing to note here is that our residents are experiencing an impact assumed from COVID. And while we're not doing any terminations right now, it's putting some people behind. And we'll have to keep watching that as we go.
Richard, why are you there just to pause on that point for a moment? Because we had chatted about this, that there are utility assistance programs out there that people might not be taking advantage of. We chatted about maybe some opportunities to get the word out to folks giving these numbers.
That's correct. We'll be sending out notices to those that are past due. Sending them to our website that'll provide the sources for those assistance programs.
This is just to confirm, that's a running total, not a yearly change, is that correct? So the aging accounts and liens are continuous, not per year, correct?
No, the adding threshold, that is the first quarter of each of these years. That's how much we're outstanding at that time. So if they haven't paid off that 187, we'll include some of the older ones. However, down at the bottom here, the newly added over previous year, we've had 152 new accounts over 2020 that are now leanable. So it's been increasing quite substantially.
So we're comparing quarters, quarter one to quarter two?
Got it. Thank you. That is correct.
And one more question. It says that you're breaking it down rental and residential. Did we change it so we are now billing the landlords themselves instead of the renter?
That's correct. We are billing landlords themselves. But as we prepare for the potential implementation of the rental housing inspection program, we went through and identified properties that have tenants. And of those properties that we've identified, those are the ones that are past due. So it may not be that the tenant is past due. It may be the landlord or a mixture of both.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may just say, before we read that screen, I think it's important to note that, that yes, so we have almost an equal number of rental properties where, you know, the landlord, either is not collecting the utility payments from their tenants, or not paying those. There was discussion, you know, the board has very good relationship with the redevelopment and housing authority. And the redevelopment and housing authority currently is administering a rental assistance program that can provide landlords and tenants relief from past due utility bills, as well as if their rent is in renters. And if anyone is interested in that, they should contact the redevelopment and housing authority for more information. That is one of the sources that we'll note when the information that we plan to put out to individuals. We also encourage people, we welcome it, to have people call us and enter into flexible payment arrangements. We haven't had too many to discuss on that offer yet. So again, you know, whatever you can do to pass the word and let people know to contact the finance department, we'll gladly work with you.
Absolutely. And then also to put those numbers into perspective, the residential number that are at the leanable threshold is about 2% of residential properties. And then the rental is about 4% of total rental units. So next, I'll move on to the solid waste account. In 2020, we changed out our bags to the orange bags. That resulted in higher sales in the first quarter as we replenished all of our vendors. They tend to stock quite a few bags. So we changed out our bags, which resulted in a higher bag sale in quarter one of 2020. We're meeting expectations right now in terms of revenue for the first quarter. And expenses, you'll see, were slightly less. And that's due to the fact that we changed the way we did our billing. Last year and years previous, we were prepaying for our trash collection service just with the way it worked out. And we adjusted that. So it looks like we're significantly less, but we haven't issued our payment yet for March. And that'll come out in April now. I also wanted to point out, in our 2021 budget, we had decided to use about $87,000 of reserves to cover operating costs. That is depleting the reserves that we have. I think we started with close to $300,000 with an expectation of ending near $200,000 at the end of 2021. We haven't increased the bag price since last year. And the collection costs continue to rise 3% every year. So the costs are going to keep going up, but we haven't raised the price to match that. I did want to note that for every 10 cents we increase the bag, that translates to about $20,000 of revenue. So if we wanted to eliminate the use of operating reserves, we would have to be somewhere near 630 to eliminate that 87,000. But, you know, we have options that we'll look at because we still have available reserves to know how we want to structure that out. Our parking fund, we're collecting less right now than we were in 2020. We weren't, we're still not collecting on our gold parking meters. We're not issuing fines for people who are there. We're also not charging anybody money for those. We did start collecting our smart meters again, but because of that, we've seen a drop in revenue over last year. And, you know, we'll continue not to see the revenue until we make that change. But overall, in terms of expenses, parking is limited on the amount of expenses that we have. So we have a little bit of flexibility in that account. And then we also have not made some large payments to some of our external agencies that are paid out of the parking fund in the first quarter. In 2020, we had already made that payment. So I anticipate that that's going to catch up here when we make those payments. Okay, our general fund, meeting expectations, revenues are typically lower in the first quarter just because we only start collecting taxes in March. And that's our big revenue generator. We're pretty consistent with 2020. The main change there is related to our real estate transfer tax. We had quite a bit of money, $92,000, that we collected in the first quarter of 2020 that we didn't collect in 2021. I'm not concerned about that. We're still at about, I think it's 65% of our budget for that revenue. So it's overall looking pretty good. And I did want to point out as well, the general fund, that we had approved to use $630,000 of reserves to help cover operating expenses. And that is primarily used for our capital projects fund and debt service related to that fund.
And Richard, would you say that the reserves are being used to cover operating expenses? Is that only for quarter one, or is that supposed to be for the year?
That is what was approved for the year.
For the year.
So we won't really know how much we're using until we get closer to year end. Right now, you know, obviously, we're using some reserves because we haven't generated the revenues from the taxes yet. And that'll all kind of start coming in mid-year.
But we don't have to multiply that times four right now, is my question.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And we may not get to that point. In 2020, we had budgeted to use, I think, $580,000. But with some decisions that were made, we were able to reduce that significantly. So we may, you know, luck out or make decisions where that goes away. And we'll continue to evaluate that as we move forward. That's just what we plan to use at this point.
Great, thank you.
I won't go through all of this, but this is where I break down our primary revenues. These are the four major ones that generate the revenue, the real property taxes. Pretty consistent with 2020. Our other local taxes, this is where you'll see the difference for real estate transfer tax being $92,000 less, but still 65% of budget. And then our expenses, we saw quite a bit of savings in our salary and benefits. We had budgeted to lay tirings in the first half of the year. And by budgeting to do that, we're definitely down from 2020, which is a good thing. So that's really what I wanted to point out on that side of things. Everybody else is, you know, within in their budgets at this point, so nothing to point out there. And finally, I wanted to touch on our debt, planned debt issuance for 2021. In the budget, we had initially approved about $11 million to be issued. At this point, our initial estimate of new money is $12.2 million. And that includes an additional million. We need that money for our tax increment financing project. And if we don't have any of that, then we'll reallocate it to some of our utility funds that kind of always need debt. But at least initially, we had budgeted to issue some new money. And at the council meeting next week, I'll be bringing forward to PBS that goes into detail about that debt issuance. In addition to the new money that we wanted to issue, you can see here the allocation between the funds. We had initially only planned on $450,000 in general fund issuance, which is through our capital projects fund. So we significantly reduced the amount that we issued there. In addition to that new money, we're looking to refinance our $5 million line of credit that we issued in 2018 to assist in gap financing for our tax increment financing project. That money was issued with the anticipation that we would get additional funding from the project. And that hasn't panned out at this point. So with a repayment expected at December of 2021, we need to refinance that with a longer term note. So at this point, we've issued about $2.6 million of that, but the project is well underway. So we expect to at least get close to that $5 million by the time we have to refinance.
Richard, really quick, just to confirm the grant that may or may not happen, the contingency we have. Does that put it in interregional transportation grant, or do you know specifically which grant that is?
I'll let Susan answer that.
Sure. So the $1 million grant is the multi-middle fund grant that the Commonwealth Financing Authority was, I think it was slated to be discussed at their March meeting, the postponed their March meeting. We anticipate that likely being considered maybe around May timeframe.
Okay, thanks. I thought that was it, but yeah, thanks for confirming.
Yes, sir.
And Richard, it says that Davenport will be evaluating our current outstanding debt. What is our current outstanding debt? Like, what is, do we have a total of that? Because I hear it in like pockets, so I guess it's hard for me to, it's like an abstract thing.
Yeah. So we actually have a total debt available to be used. We have about $6.3 million left to use. However, the amount of debt that we have outstanding is...
Sure, take your time.
Going into our budget here.
I'm sure I could have found it if I dug through the 175, 200 pages. You know which page it's on.
About $40 million total across all the funds.
Okay, great, thank you.
And like you said, Davenport will be performing an evaluation on our outstanding debt to see if any of that debt that's outstanding, would there be savings there if we were to refinance that? We did the same thing in 2017, so they'll let us know if there's some good savings there. Rates subsequently decreased since we did do the 2017 rolling. So I suspect that there will be quite a bit of savings. Whether or not we refinance all of it or just some of it, that's something that they'll be able to help us navigate.
And just, I guess, one more question. So we pretty much do issue debt every year? Like, there's not...
No, we issue, we try to issue on a two-year rolling basis, depending on capital needs. And we've actually, we did issue in 2018, but that was specifically for the TIF. So the last time we actually issued really for new money was in 2017. So we've actually pushed it off a number of years before our planned issuance.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so that was the highlights of my report, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Richard about our budget status?
Yep, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Thanks for that, Richard. Richard, are we any closer on the federal relief money on getting guidance as to how that can be spent? I see Susan are just shaking her head.
No, as far as I know, we have not received that guidance yet.
We actually haven't even received formal notification of our allocation. Even though we know what we're getting, we haven't received formal communication of that. So we're still waiting.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to add, while Davenport is evaluating this, that we have a little bit of time to adjust the amount that we issue. So if we find out that maybe there's some projects that we can use that funding for, that we don't want to issue for, we have a little bit of time to adjust that total number. But at this point, I've included the budget, what we expected to issue.
Yeah, and I guess the reason why I was asking, because you are the numbers person, and I totally trust you. It's more of just like the overarching, looking down the future, you know, we have to issue it this year. And we've had, you know, 2020 was a year. And, you know, just trying to figure out at what point, like, if we have to start issuing that more often than that two-year cycle higher. And, you know, really trying to evaluate, you know, capital projects and what's normal and what we can normally accomplish. And then trying to, like, I just don't want to cut it. You know what I mean? Like, looking in the future, figuring out like when we would have to cut it because of taxes and because of where does the money come from? And our normal budget is about $50 million, and our debt's about $40 million. So I don't, you know, like, having that threshold that our debt is actually more than what we're actually running off of. So it's sort of those overarching, looking really long term. I really appreciate that we're now seeing this in quarterly increments, so we can kind of have those discussions. And that's sort of been where I think that it's been kind of hard for me to get a grasp of what I should even be asking or how we could work together. And I think that that's the key. It's like, it is a work together. It's not like a, hey, do all this great work. But that's my bigger concern, just trying to look ahead. And it's, we couldn't have looked ahead last year to know that we were going to be here now. So, yeah.
And I will say that of the $40 million, the bulk of that is in our utility funds. And when we did our rate study for those funds, the rates were determined to cover that, to cover the debt service for that. So that's all planned in the utility funds and ongoing debt that we issue in those funds. The one that we have to watch, of course, is the general fund and the fact that we're refinancing this $5 million. That's a lot of debt to take on at one time. And so we'll have to structure it in such a way that, you know, we're meeting council's goals in terms of how much debt service we pay each year and all that. And, you know, we may come to a time where if we don't find those solutions, issuing debt for the capital projects, you know, we'll have to really consider doing that. And at this point, we've already started the process of reducing the amount that we issue. I mean, $450,000 is not a whole lot in the grand scheme of the capital projects that we do. But the TIF is a beast. And so that $5 million is quite a hit.
Thank you.
Anything further for Richard on the budget? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much, Richard. Always informative. Appreciate it. Moving on to meeting minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve the March 3rd, 2021 workshop meeting minutes.
Sir, moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fulham Winston. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you very much. Community planning and smart growth, Councilor Ramsey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight. It is an action item on a zoning ordinance map amendment. I am told that we have some visitors in Borough Hall that I would like to throw to first if they have any comments or any overview that would be helpful for council. So if Mr. Kentucky or Attorney Gilroy are available, if they could give us a brief update, that would be helpful.
They are present, and the floor is yours, sirs.
We can't hear.
Yep, is the mic on at the podium? We're having trouble.
Is this better?
Yep, we got you.
It's the first time council ever said they couldn't hear me in this building, so it's, that's okay. Again, Hubert Gilroy, on behalf of 3T Investors, we're here this evening to ask council to entertain a zone change request. The specific action council would be taking would be to authorize the advertisement of the public hearing in June on this request. The request is from 3T Investors, which in fact is Kentucky, and Ken is here. I'm going to turn it over to him in a minute. Frankly, I'm proud to be representing Ken again on one of his public-minded investment plans to get involved in this. This is the Grace United Methodist Church. The church has vacated the borough, moved out to, I think it's partially in South Middleton, very nice facilities out there. Our request is to rezone the church property from R4 to a C1. It's a 1.13 acre parcel with a 45 Southwest Street address. Some of you may not have been around when Mr. Tucky did some of his prior projects. So I forwarded to staff some of the information on Ken's prior work. And I believe that's been circulated. So I'm going to ask Ken to just give a brief presentation with respect to his prior involvement in the borough. And again, this is 3T purchasing the property with intent of redeveloping the property, but also maintaining ownership. This is not a project for a third party. It's for 3T, which is in effect the Tucky family, Ken.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing us this time. I think you do have, as you can see, the property there, you know, it's a complex site. But I get excited about these. We've done projects like this over the years. One of the ones that is great in downtown Carlisle is the Centenary Building. And I think you have a brochure or you have some information on that. Now, that one, we started after a fire from rubble. There's some of you in this room that can remember back. That was a challenging job. It was that's job and then also Addison next to it. And Tim, if you recall, we had to make sure that the effects of that fire didn't interfere with the theater that bad. So that was a very challenging job. We've also done a project where we took eight locations, eight properties up in Newville, which had a bank, a church, and another bank and some joint properties. Did the same thing with it. What we created was mixed use, use where we were able to put some commercial in one area and then some residential apartments. And that's how I see this. Everybody was like to say, this is a done, this is your plan. This is how it is. We've done enough of these projects to know that they evolve. You look at the opportunity, you get feedback, you hear what people are interested in. And for me, it's an exciting part of it. What I really like about this, what drew my interest to this one, is it's a historic building. Started in 1875 and added to it. It's, I think, a great location, and I think we can maintain some of that outside, a lot of that outside look the way it is now, and then inside transform that. The reason for the zoning changing and stuff Hubert can get into, but it gives us the opportunities to look at the flexibility, whether we continue with some school education, whether we look at some apartments, or we go into some office suites, combination. The hardest part we've had since we started looking at this job is COVID and how society, what they want now, what the group wants now. We have had, although it's, we're in our due diligence, so we haven't purchased the property yet, but we have had interest outside from anything, from the apartments to, it'd be nice to have a small unit and an office I can walk to there, to that of condos. So I wish I could sit here and say, this is exactly how everything's going to look. But I will tell you that look at the other projects we've done. I can get into projects that we don't own, but we've done a lot of renovations, historical preservation, and we respect that. So I've been in the Carlisle area my whole life. I have properties throughout Carlisle. I take that very seriously. Carlisle's a great community, and I want to add to it with this project.
Can't pick a better client than that. If this is moving forward, there'll be a more formal presentation before the Borough Planning Commission. This will also be reviewed by the County Planning Commission. And then at a public hearing, there'll be opportunity for public comment and additional questions. So we're available if there's anything else on council's mind.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. And before I throw it to council for any questions, for those following along at home, our new technology within the borough is very exciting. So it was cool in the Zoom box to be able to see our speakers and the presentation. So credit to staff for the hard work that they've done on that, and I think there's more to come. But that's super helpful, I think, for us to be able to hear people and see people who are speaking at that podium. Any questions from council while we have the gentleman here?
I'll just say a couple things, and since you mentioned the new system, I'll say, if ever the decision to hire Stephanie Taylor with her background in news production, I mean, this is really, really perfect. So, thank you, Stephanie. Thanks for pulling this all together. It's been so seamless so far tonight. So I'm setting you up. But this, you know, I'm sure we'll have more questions as we dig into the details of this project at the hearing, but I think we ought to support this. We just saw these budget numbers where we can get some economic development happening, and broaden the tax base, and take some of that burden off of the rest of the property owners in town by taking a property that has been tax exempt off the tax exemption. And having this opportunity is fantastic. And as we all know, I think Mr. Tucky has done exemplary jobs throughout the borough over the years.
And I just wanted to just say that having, the first apartment I lived in in Carlisle was part of the Grace Methodist Church, was the assistant pastor's house, and then became part of the school. Looking at that as a potential dead spot in the neighborhood was really concerning, because it is such a big chunk. And to have it used in an imaginative and a creative way, which I'm sure Ken will be able to get us to, is very exciting.
Councilor Cramsey, just, I don't know, is a perfectly defined response, but just, in summary, is it fair to say that moving forward, that the main provision to authorize it as a C1 would involve the potential commercial aspects of that more so than the residential additions? Or is that an oversimplification?
I would indicate that there's just more uses authorized in the C1 zone, not necessarily just commercial.
Okay, so perhaps allocating a C1, it would open up more possibilities for utilization as development goes forward?
That's absolutely right. We just wanted to have more opportunities for the vision to expand, and alternatives for users.
Great. Thank you.
I had asked staff to show the before and after of the centenary project, because that is one that I know that the borough collaborated, was a great public private partnership that occurred back in 2004. So for anyone new to the borough of Carlisle, you wouldn't have gotten a better definition of light than what was on the corner of High and Pitt Street. So I don't know if Owen or Stephanie could show that photograph real quick.
Owen is working on calling it up right now.
So, there's the before and the after, and I think there's another page to that, Owen, is that correct, or is that it for on this particular one?
I was not in TV, so you'll have to bear with me here for a second.
No, Owen, that's no problem. While you find the other one. And Susan, I think that's a great point to bring that up. Are there any other comments from council? Seeing shaking heads.
The one I was going to say was just, I think that, you know, looking at the traditional development, this was from, what, 1899, and adaptive historic reuse, and some of our zoning conventions don't always match 1899, but to be able to renovate and restore and make this a mixed-use beauty in the heart of downtown Lockville, I think that this is a smart move. So putting it in the C1 and allowing for some other options, I think it's a great choice.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Tucky, Mr. Gilroy. And I echo my colleagues' statements. I think this is a, you know, I support moving this ahead to the June 10 hearing. I think it's an exciting time. It's an exciting proposal. We're looking forward to see, you know, what else can be done with this property. And before I make that motion, Mr. Solicitor, did I miss any important questions?
You did not.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, with that, I will make a motion that Borough Council may direct the Borough Solicitor to schedule a public hearing on June 10, 2021, and proceed with public notification for proposed zoning ordinance map amendment request submitted by 3T Investors LP, applicable to tax parcel ID 04210320066, former Grace United Methodist Church, 45 Southwest Street, from R4 Town Center Residential to C1 Central Business District.
Mr. Cramsey makes a motion to schedule a public hearing to entertain a zoning amendment request. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion by council on this matter? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. If I may have one moment, first of all, thanks for moving us up on the agenda. And secondly, a shout out to your man, Steven Spear, who has been working with council. I coached the trial team at the law school, and he's been the rock star of the team the past two years. He'll be graduating, hopefully, right, Steven? So we won't have him after this year, but I know we had to move our practices around sometimes, because he told me he had to go to a council meeting, so that's...
And rightfully so.
But, and thanks to council for making that opportunity available for law students.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen, and we're lucky to have Steven as well. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cramsey. Moving on to mayor's report, I have several action items, and we'll begin. The first is the downtown Carlisle Bunny Hop. I move that council ratify the eighth downtown Carlisle Bunny Hop in downtown Carlisle to be held April 10, 2021, from noon to 3:00 p.m. Participants shall be responsible for compliance with any and all applicable COVID-19 precautionary measures at the time of the event, and stop-the-spread flyers and posters, along with hand sanitizers, shall be accessible at each participating business. Approval is retroactive to March 24, 2021, the date of notice to proceed. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the downtown Carlisle Bunny Hop? It's a great event. Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next, a letter of support for 3P Ride. I move that council ratify a letter of support to the Truist Foundation, submitted by 3P Ride, for their four-phase route planning project in the I-81 corridor between Chambersburg and Harrisburg. Approval is retroactive to March 15, 2021. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item C, YWCA Paint the Town Teal. I move that council ratify approval of the YWCA's request to tie teal-colored ribbons to borough lamp posts as a sign of solidarity for Sexual Awareness Month, contingent upon the following. Ribbons permitted to be hung from borough downtown street lamp poles beginning March 29 through April 30. The ribbons need to be removed no later than the morning of May 3, Monday. Ribbons needed to be, ribbons need to be secured tightly and at a height that shall prevent them from being easily removed by pedestrians or inclement weather. Next, inspect the area periodically to ensure that the ribbons remain secure and in good condition. And finally, volunteers are asked to comply with any and all applicable COVID-19 precautionary measures. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item, Ceasefire PA is requesting Borough Council sign a letter of support seeking to advance policies to address three areas involving gun safety. First, extreme risk protection orders. This would reduce firearms, suicides, mass shootings, domestic violence, and community violence. With this policy in place, family members can petition a judge to temporarily remove firearms from a loved one in crisis without any involuntary mental health commitment. Second, expanded background checks. This would prevent felons or other dangerous individuals from purchasing military-style rifles from a private, nonlicensed seller. And finally, lost or stolen gun reporting. This would keep illegal firearms out of the hands of people with violent intent by requiring gun owners to report the loss or theft of a firearm within three days of discovering the firearm is gone. Therefore, I move that council consider supporting the advancement of these policies and send a letter of support to Ceasefire Pennsylvania. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion of a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. And finally, the members of the Pennsylvania Municipal League have been asked to sign a letter of support of a message sent by PML to the Pennsylvania General Assembly requesting the prohibition of firearms from municipal buildings. By way of background, schools, counties, court facilities, and state government are currently authorized to prohibit the carrying of firearms on municipal property. Local government is not permitted the same authorization. Senators Collette and Comida, from Bucks County and Chester County respectively, have announced plans to reintroduce legislation to enable municipalities to prohibit firearms on municipal property. Although prior similar bills did not specify the exemption for law enforcement, it is anticipated that local governments could make these exemptions in their local ordinances. Therefore, I move that council consider supporting advancement of legislation that prohibits firearms in municipal buildings. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. That ends my lengthy mayor's report. Now, moving on to budget and finance.
Well, first, we have a staff update on the solar project. Not sure who's taking that one away.
I believe that'll be Richard first, and potentially Mark, and I can add to the conversation as well. But go ahead, Richard. Take the lead on it.
All right. Feels good to be back. Just wanted to let you know that APPI Energy consultants are on the line to be able to answer some questions, should any arise. But essentially, one of council's goals was to implement a renewable energy system at the borough's wastewater treatment plant facility. We have about 10 acres of land there that we've identified, that we could possibly enter or install a solar array. And since the borough entered into a new energy agreement in December of 2020, it was a five-year agreement, and that energy agreement allowed the borough to basically utilize as much or as little electricity as we need, with the idea that if we were to install a solar array project, it would ultimately reduce the amount of energy that we're consuming for electricity, and maybe even putting electricity back into that. Going into that agreement, we had consulted with APPI Energy. They were able to reduce our rates over the next five years. Also, they were able to give us renewable energy credits for the electricity that we are currently using, and then also made it so that we were able to move forward with the solar project. In previous years, we were limited by our energy contracts and the amount that we could reduce the electricity. So we have a lot of flexibility going forward in the next five years. And in our 2021 capital budget, we had placed over 50,000 to allow for a planning and design of a potential solar energy project. So we had met a couple times last year to go over what we could potentially see, and got a very preliminary analysis that suggested implementing a solar array project would may even meet the demands of our wastewater treatment plant. So it's something that seems viable, but we have to do this study to really know what we can generate.
Are there any questions from council? I do, but I will limit myself to one or two. This is really great. I guess, I don't know if anybody can answer this directly. I sort of assume this is sort of a virtual providing of electricity that is commensurate with the demand that the treatment plant has, in the sense that electricity is just going to go back to the grid, that there's no hardwire connection between the generation at the site and the actual consumption. I just, I wanted to make sure that assumption was true. Anyone speak to that?
I'll attempt to do that, and maybe the folks from APPI that are on line may be able to do a little bit better. So in going through this, what we did was, we looked at the total amount of land that we had available at the wastewater treatment plant, and what we could potentially use in the future for treatment processes. And with that set aside, then, we looked at the remaining land available, and we had APPI do an analysis to come up with the total amount of electricity they could potentially generate with that available land. So the initial proposal was not based on our demand at the wastewater treatment plant, but it was really based on the amount of available land that we had, and the analysis they made on how much could be produced, based on where it was pointed in, and how much light we'd get in a calendar year.
I think what Joel's looking for, maybe APPI, who do we have, who do we have from there?
I believe Ben Haffleton's on, is that correct, Richard?
Correct. I think, Joel, you correct me if I'm wrong, you're, I mean, very directly, I think, looking for, is this electricity going straight from the solar array to the plant, or are we just connecting with the grid and getting credit for that?
Oh, I meant to answer the question.
It kind of looked coincidental that the generation was almost exactly what the plant was using, so I wanted to make sure it was nothing more than a coincidence, that my understanding is that that would just be put back onto the grid, you know, and, you know, part of a power purchase agreement, or possibly put on the wholesale market, and not literally connected to supply our load there.
Hi, guys. This is Mondo Madden, Vice President of Energy Solutions at APPI Energy. So you're right in assuming, generally, when we would help clients enter into a power purchase agreement, the energy that's generated on-site would normally flow back into the grid. So you're not actually using the solar that is generated on-site, but you're offsetting the amount of electricity that you're using. Having said that, there's also, you know, times where you could be directly connected to the system on-site, but that's not an option we've just thoroughly reviewed yet. So, but we can explore that.
Thank you very much. I guess my only other comment would be, if we have the capacity to generate more than what the facility uses, if that was our limitation, I would certainly support...
if that was our limitation, I would certainly support, you know, any additional capacity we could put there. But I don't know if that's the case or not.
Of course, of course. And this has been an effort to be Vice President Consultant as well, and that's absolutely an option. It would be net metering, essentially, so, you know, you could freely spread out the power being generated via the solar arrays across all of your accounts evenly, even via net metering. So it's totally up to the Borough how, you know, you want to proceed. One of the most important things to consider, two important things to consider. One is you do not want to produce power than any one single account can consume, effectively taking away the account totally from the utility. That is when you would end up having issues with your supply contracts, because essentially, the supplier who's currently serving your load would be able to say, oh, you've totally dropped this account. This account is now obsolete. So they would charge you potentially a early termination fee in that situation. So, you know, we would want to avoid any of that at all costs. So by doing so, you either do net metering across all accounts, and then every single account reduces their power consumption by a certain percentage based on the size of the array, or you size it just slightly less than the size of the sewage treatment plant account, for instance, so.
Thank you very much, Benjamin. That was very helpful. Yeah, that's all my questions. Thanks, Sean.
Any other questions? No one's going to try to top those questions, Joel.
I mean, I have about 10 more, but those are the ones I look forward to working with Mark and others.
Yeah. Great questions. We'll hire you, so.
Anything else? Okay, and we'll be looking for action on this next week at our regular meeting. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the budget supplemental appropriation. I move that Borough Council adopt a resolution taking the following actions. Authorizing additional supplemental budget appropriations to those funds and departments outlined in the resolution. Furthermore, to amend the 2021 to 2025 CIP to include 2020 projects not completed and carried over to 2021.
Deputy Mayor Schultz makes a motion involving a supplemental budget appropriation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items before I get to the item on the agenda. I just want to update Borough and staff on a meeting we had with our City of Carlisle, Sister City, earlier today. Just a regular scheduled follow-up from our previous meetings to collaborate on our climate action plans. They presented their overall strategy to us. We spent about 90 minutes. The folks, Susan and from our staff, and four members from our commission, and they had their climate action commission counselor, as well as Susan's counterpart on there, and just some really promising efforts that I think we're both going to learn a lot from. We're going to present our strategy next month, and then work on some specific objectives in getting our first of four subgroups in place. And I think we're going to focus on community engagement as the first one we're going to kick in place. And lastly, we discussed some activities to do a collaborative Earth Day recognition of our respective towns. So I know Sarah's hard at work with Stephanie to put something together, so. Movement there, and we'll keep everyone informed as we form our groups and move forward on this effort. But a real productive meeting, and thank you, everybody who could make it. And from the agenda, I move that council ratify approval of the Carlisle Theater's submission for a Pennsylvania Creative Communities Grant application. I will add, subject to Susan's correction, that this is nothing that, in a letter of support, doesn't commit us to any action at this point, but really does showcase our support for the theater's renovation, and we look forward to hopefully having the option to talk about this more as they apply for grants. So I make the motion.
Counselor Hicks makes a motion for a letter of support for the Carlisle Theater. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that completes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor Scott. I have one action item tonight. This is the pool slide restoration contract. So I make the motion that Borough Council approve a contract in the amount of $16,320 to Aquaman Water Slide Restorations LLC to perform pool water slide restoration work at the Carlisle Community Pool.
I love the contractor's name. Counselor Landis makes a motion to approve a pool slide restoration contract. Is there, and I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
That completes my report.
Thank you, madam. Public Safety. We have a staff briefing on Logistics Drive and Parking.
All right, I'll take that. A bit ago, we received some calls of concern, complaints regarding the intersection of South Sheer Drive and Logistics Drive. That's located in the southwest corner of the Borough. The area is owned industrial, primarily where there's warehouses and logistics facilities. And included in your packet this evening is a memorandum that resulted after engineering staff performed a study of the area, looked at vehicle speeds, the amount of vehicles traveling in that distance, I mean, in that area, and we also investigated site distance. Whenever the land development plan for that areas, for those land development plans for that area, was presented, and since the construction has now reached build-out, we've had a lot more vehicles traveling along Logistics Drive, and the mix of vehicles has been much more passenger vehicles than trucks. As a result of that, the speed of the vehicles is a lot higher approaching that intersection. What we've also found is that there's a significant amount of truck parking on the eastern side of the intersection. There's a photo there that's included in the memorandum showing several trucks parked along the northern edge of Logistics Drive. So this photograph was taken by a vehicle that pulls up to the stop sign at Logistics Drive and is looking eastward to see if it's safe to pull out and proceed in an eastern direction. And because of the curve of the road, and also because of the trucks that are parked there, it's really a blind spot. Now, the T-intersection has a stop sign on South Sheer Drive, but folks traveling either east or west on Logistics do not have a stop. So in looking at that, and looking at the amount of site distance that would be required based on the speeds of the vehicles, we're recommending that council consider adopting ordinance that would establish a no parking zone along that, the northern edge of Logistics Drive. Each of the warehouses that are there do have off-street parking for both employees and trucks. So I do not look this to be a limitation on an area that has a great demand for on-street parking. It's just that they're parking right immediately adjacent to the intersection, where other areas further away from the intersection are vacant.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Will this be on our agenda for next week, or are you looking to?
Well, actually, if council would be so inclined, we'd ask that you authorize the Solicitor to draft an advertising ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle with respect to Chapter 244 to establish a prohibition against parking of vehicles at all times on Logistics Drive at the intersection with South Sheer Drive from the intersection east for 170 feet along the north side of the street.
If council's agreeable, I will go ahead and make that motion, if there's a second.
That was a motion, I'll second it.
We will consider that a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Got your marching orders, Mark?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that ends my report, and we'll turn things over to Ms. Fulham-Winston for Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. We have four things on the agenda tonight. The first being a thermoplastic contract. I would ask Borough Council to approve a unit price contract with Traffic Lines Incorporated of Farmingdale, New Jersey, under the CapCog 2021 Thermoplastic Application Joint Bid Contract for a not-to-exceed cost of $15,500.
There's motion to approve a 2021 street thermoplastic application contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
More street work. I would ask Borough Council to approve a unit price construction contract with Tennessee Supply Incorporated of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for the 2021 Street Maintenance Program in the amount of $9.10 per square yard for street milling and paving under CapCog 2021 Street Milling and Paving Joint Bid Contract.
Ms. Fulham-Winston makes a motion to approve a contract for street milling and paving in year 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And more construction work. I'd ask Borough Council to approve a unit price construction contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC of Amayes, Pennsylvania, for the 2021 Street Maintenance Program in the amount of $7.34 per square yard of applied surface under CapCog 2021 Ultra Thin Bonded Wearing Course Application Contract.
Ms. Fulham-Winston makes a motion to approve a street maintenance contract. We'll just summarize it like that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And last but not least, some stormwater management. I ask Borough Council to authorize Borough staff to proceed with the North Pitt Street and D Street Stormwater Management Project for a not-to-exceed cost of $65,000, and purchase the materials needed for the project through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Co-Stars Program.
Ms. Fulham-Winston makes a motion to approve and authorize a street stormwater management program. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to new business. Is there any new business to come before council? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right. Thank you very much, folks. We are adjourned. See you next week.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.